Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, September 29th, 2020. This is Vice Chair Samudhi. This meeting is called to order. As first order of business, I'll request staff to call roll for the commissioners who are present and not.
Commissioner Davidson? Commissioner Luba Mersky? Commissioner Pravat Ali?
Present.
Commissioner Saudi? Chair Mercado is not in, so we have Commissioner Davidson and Chair Mercado are not in, and therefore Vice Chair Samudhi acts as chair for tonight.
Thank you. I'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes on the order of the agenda? All right, if not, we'll move on to the meeting procedures. Due to the COVID-19 shelter-in-place order, we've had to establish new ways of conducting our public meetings. I'd like to ask staff to address how public will work this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair Samudhi. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we are accepting public comments over the telephone and through the YouTube Live chat channel. The meeting is being streamed live to YouTube, where members of the community can provide public comments on agenda items in YouTube's live chat feature. That can be found at www.cityofsanrefel-- sorry, www.youtube.com/cityofsanrefel. We also have the option for community members to attend via conference call into the Zoom meeting by dialing the following number: 1-669-900-9128. And the meeting ID to enter is 897-5534-1830. If you are participating by telephone and wish to provide comments, please press *9 when the public hearing time opens up for that item. And then that will let us know that you want to speak. This virtually raises your hand, the *9. Once it is your turn to speak, you will hear a notification that the host is unmuting you to participate. At that time, please press *6 to unmute yourself. You can then speak, introduce yourself, and you'll be allotted up to three minutes to provide your comments. If you're submitting comments via the YouTube Live chat, you can enter those comments in the live chat box to let us know you want your comments read aloud by writing in all caps "PUBLIC COMMENT." Prior to your comments, introduce yourself, let us know if you're speaking on an agenda item or non-agenda item. Comments in the chat are limited to three minutes worth of text. One note is that the YouTube chat feature only allows a 200-character limit per box. So if you have more than 200 characters worth of comments to make, you'll have to enter the first set and then enter more comments in the next box. And then comments will be read as submitted. Words including profanity, obscenity, discriminatory language that disturb the decorum of the meeting will not be read into the record. If you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the Planning Commission and published on the website. For more information about the real-time public comments and how that all works, please visit our live commenting page at www.cityofsanrefel.org/live-commenting-pilot.
Thank you, Rafi. Let me now describe how the meeting procedures will go forward. We'll begin with the staff report. Then we will hear from the applicant. Applicants, please try to keep your presentation to no more than 10 minutes. Public will then be invited to speak. We will read any comments that are made into YouTube Live chat, and people on the conference call can speak when they receive the notification that they have been unmuted. Please keep comments to three minutes. Commission will then have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public after each segment. We will then close public hearing and bring the matter back to the Commission for discussion and action if necessary. With that said, is there anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda? If that's the case, they may address the Commission at this time.
So if there's anyone on the conference call that wishes to provide public comments on items not on this agenda, press *9 now to virtually raise your hand. While we wait for her to see if any of the members that are dialed in have any comments, I'll check the YouTube Live chat, and there are no comments not on the agenda-- for items not on the agenda in the YouTube Live. It does not look like any of the listeners have any public comments on the items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Rafi. We'll now move on to the consent calendar, which has one item, which is the minutes from September 15th, 2020, our previous Planning Commission meeting. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
So this will be the same. If there's anybody that's dialed in that would like to comment on the minutes, please press *9 at this moment to raise your hand. And while I wait, I am checking YouTube Live chat, and there are no comments on the minutes on YouTube Live, nor are there any phone-in comments.
Okay, thanks. The show will now ask if there are no commission comments or edits. If there are not, I'll entertain a motion. Please state your name if you will entertain a motion.
Luba Mersky moved to approve.
This is Chon Pravat Ali. I second the motion.
Is there any discussion on this? All right, if not, staff, I'll ask you conduct roll call.
Commissioner Hill? Commissioner Luba Mersky? Commissioner Pravat Ali? Commissioner Saudi? Vice Chair Samudhi?
All right, thank you. We'll now move on to public hearing. The first item on our public hearing is the 1309 Second Street project. This is a request for a use permit and environmental and design review permit to demolish the existing single-family residence and construct a three-unit multi-tenant residential structure with four covered garage parking spaces. The chair at this time will request a staff report.
Okay, I will be presenting a report, but I will ask Rafi to allow me to share my screen. Okay, so the item now before you is a project at 1309 Second Street. This is a site plan for the project. And it is a three-unit multi-residential project on a 2,940-square-foot lot. Two units will be 895 square feet, and those are the first level above the garage. There is one unit that is on the top level that will be 1,656 square feet. This-- I'm going to go through some slides to show you the design approach, but I'm going to leave the applicant to give you kind of the bulk of that presentation. So I'll focus on some slides and then provide you with some policy discussion that I'm asking the Planning Commission to weigh in on. So this is the north elevation, and this slide kind of provides you with the context of the proposed building, which is in the middle, in comparison with existing development on each side of the building. This is from Second Street looking at the building. And then this is on the opposite side in the rear yard, south elevation, kind of the same type of design elements that are contributed to this backside. And then this slide shows it to the east and west elevations. The west elevation is the area where the access points where the units will be, and there's a balcony on that side. And then this kind of provides you with a photo simulation of what the design will look like. The design-- the proposed project has been reviewed by the Design Review Board, and the Design Review Board was very supportive of the project. There were some conditions of approval that they were asking us to provide, and those are included in the recommended resolution that is before you tonight. So the policy discussion is related to rounding of fractional units. The property is located at-- located in the second and third mixed-use zoning district. This district allows one unit per 1,000 square feet, and when you do that calculation, you end up with 2.94 units. So not quite the three units that the applicant is requesting. The rounding of fractional units is used in density bonus projects currently, and this applies to both the base unit and the density bonus unit, as well as the affordable housing unit. The zoning code is silent on how to treat fractional units for non-density bonus projects. However, because it's already applied to density bonus projects, staff is proposing that this be applied to all multifamily housing as part of their review process. So this approach is consistent with City Council's direction to look for creative ways to encourage production of housing. The rounding of fractional units, like I said, is already used for affordable housing projects, so would be consistent with the way we treat other projects. And then the last thing I want to mention here is that the rounding of fractional units would generally increase the number of units by one unit at the most. The recommendation is that the fractional rounding would be anything beyond .5 would round up, anything less than that would round down. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this rounding is consistent with the maximum allowable densities allowed by the general plan. For this site, the general time density is 32 to 62 units per acre, which would allow up to four units for this property. However, the general plan consistency would need to be verified on a case-by-case basis using this fractional rounding of units approach. And then lastly, I wanted to mention that the rounding of units is only likely to benefit smaller lots. Larger lots already benefit from the rounding because they're required to provide the affordable housing, and because they're required to provide the affordable housing, they're able to take advantage of density bonus under state law, so they would already be rounding up. So it's just the smaller lots that aren't able to take advantage of density bonus provisions and also aren't able to take advantage of or are unable to provide the affordable housing. So for this reason, staff's recommending approval of the three units that the applicant is proposing. So that concludes my report. Other than I wanted to mention that we did receive some comments that were forwarded-- Other than I wanted to mention that we did receive some comments that were forwarded to you. I believe it was, there was one comment related to this project in support of the proposed project and the rounding of the units, fractional units. So with that said, staff recommends adoption of resolution, a proven environmental and design review permit, as well as an administrative use permit for the three units, for the three-unit multifamily residential building with the recommended conditions of approval that are in the resolution. The applicant is here and prepared to make a presentation, and that concludes my report on this item.
All right, thank you, Ally. At this time, the show would like to ask the commission if there are any questions of staff. Seeing none, call the applicants for to make their presentation.
Okay, could I share a screen, please?
Yeah, go ahead and start your video and then hit share screen.
All right, so I didn't quite do it in that order, but here we go. Okay, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So honorable commissioners, thank you very much for hearing our proposal for the three-unit residential on Second Street, 1309. Along with me, Ron Cappy, who is the architect, with my office at Second and D Street, just down the street from this project, is Matthew Burns, who is the owner, owner's representative. Matthew, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good.
The owner's here also in the background.
All right, good deal. Okay, so just to, I'm going to lightly touch on a few things. So Ally already hit the main points. So our proposal is a three-unit two-story residential podium over ground floor parking. You know that two of them are 895 square feet, one is 1,656 square feet. We have four parking spaces, one is ADA compliant. We have bio-retention planter boxes, 126 square feet, and we're also planning to use permeable pavers at the rear yard as part of the parking. The lighting scheme will reduce light and glare for city standards. We're in a 36-foot height zone, and our height of our building is 30 feet, six and a half inches, so we're under that. We provide a variety in the mix of housing for couples and for families. It adds residential units to the downtown area close to retail, restaurants, and services. And the smaller unit size accommodates the level of affordability that is needed within the city. Another view of the context, you know, 3D view. Ally has showed you a 2D view. So you see that the dormers that you saw on the flat view are actually mid-building. So what you see is more of a gable roof at the front. It's consistent with the adjacent neighbors in terms of height, front setback, the mixed use along this corridor, and using materials that are featured along the corridor in terms of stucco and wood, and a similar level of landscape features. I wanted to highlight a couple of architectural features. West-facing windows do get quite a nice view of Mount Tam from the upper level. And we have secure entrances to the units that also come off of corridors, exterior corridors on the west side, so there are no entrances from the street level. And the gable roofs with dormers are in character with the surrounding building. The proposed materials, fire-safe clapet, comp shingles, stucco exterior walls, state and cedar wood at the front of the building, and metal railing construction along the property line. There's a discreet but functionally placed lula elevator at the rear for ADA access. This is a quick look at the parking plan, which features bike parking, mailboxes, a refuse bin area. Can you see my cursor when I move around? This is the bike area and mailbox area. This is the refuse bin area. Here's the secure entrance to the, from the garage to the stairs up to the units. The four parking spaces, this is the van accessible space, and the permeable pavers are in this location in the rear yard. Here's a quick look at the floor plan. It's a two-bedroom, two-bath scheme. This is a mirror image. This is on the first level. Somebody comes up the stairs and enters their unit at the middle of the lot. Upstairs follows that same footprint, but it's now a three-bedroom, three-bath family unit. So we are requesting approval. We feel that our project is a good neighbor. It's consistent with the neighborhood corridor. We feel that our project contributes positively to the community, adding affordable living units close to downtown. Location is walkable to downtown restaurants, retail, and services. It supports the city goals for more residential units, and it's consistent with the general plan policy noted in the staff report and the staff recommendation for approval. So thank you for hearing our short presentation, and we are open for questions and comments at this point.
Thank you. At this point, do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none.
Shall I stop sharing the screen at this point, or are we going to want to reference in the recording?
We may, we'll open up to public hearing at this point. So if staff could open public comments at this point?
Yeah, and Mr. Cappy, if you can, shut down your screen, and we'll, if we need it, we'll ask you to bring it back up. So this brings us to the public hearing portion of the, for this item, 1309 Second Street. If there was anyone in the conference call that wishes to provide public comment on this agenda item, please press star nine now, and that will virtually raise your hand. While we wait to see if there is anybody who wishes to comment via phone, I'll also check the YouTube Live chat feature. And if there's anybody who wants to make any public comments in YouTube Live, this will be the time. And we'll just give it a minute here, see if there's any comments on 1309 Second Street. I do see that we have three phone-in callers, so if anybody, any one of those three is wishing to comment on this item, now is the time. And you can indicate by pressing star nine. Okay, I'm not seeing any comments in YouTube Live, nor are there any phone comments that have virtually raised their hand, so.
Okay, thanks, Raffi. So at this point, we're hearing no public comment. I'm going to close the public hearing. At this point, commissioners, this will be your turn to ask any follow-up questions of staff or the applicant that you have. I can call on people, or if you have anybody questions, you can jump on it. Okay, hearing no questions. Staff, are there any additional comments or advice with regards to any particular motion we may be carrying forward?
No, I don't have any changes recommended. It would just be the resolution that was provided to you.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any additional comments to make, or in lieu of comments, a motion?
I'll make a comment, then a motion. I think it's a, it's a nice improvement from what's there now. I think the design is a little, little boring. Now, some embellishments would be nice, fascia, window treatments, something like that, but, I mean, it's, it's a building, and it seems very functional, and it'll improve the situation, what exists now, the existing situation. So I'll make a motion to approve the project as presented.
One second.
This is Eli Hill, I second the motion.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move to roll call. Staff, could you conduct roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Lubomirski?
Yes.
Commissioner Previtali?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Samutzi?
Yes, as well. All right, at this point, we'll ask staff to inform the public of the appeal rights of this decision.
Okay. So the planning commission decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within five business days. This will end on Tuesday, October 6th at 5:00 p.m. Anyone wishing to appeal this decision should contact the city clerk by email at city.clerk2@cityofcenterfell.org or by phone at 453066 to make arrangements for filing an appeal.
All right, thank you, Ally. We'll now move on to public hearing item number two, second on our public hearing is.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, on our second item on the agenda is the project for 3301 Kerner Boulevard for Homeward Bound. This is a use permit to allow for an emergency shelter to be located on, within an existing 25,000-square-foot building. At this point, I'll request a staff report.
Okay, thank you, Chair Samutzi. So the applicant is proposing to operate an emergency shelter at 3301 Kerner Boulevard. The proposal is for 45 beds for temporary time of one year. This is a proposal that is being requested to accommodate the 45 beds during the construction of 190 Mill Street project, which was approved by the City Council earlier this year. So this is the floor plan of the proposed emergency shelter. The use would be on the third floor of the building. The floor layout includes bathroom facilities, a common multipurpose room, a computer lounge area, as well as offices for the shelter staff. So I wanted to go into a policy discussion about this proposed use as well. The use is a permitted use per government code section, sorry, it requires a use permit, but under government code section 65583, there are some parameters for review of emergency shelters that are placed on local governments. A use permit may be processed, however, the review criteria is based on, needs to be based on objective performance or just development standards as well as management standards. So the applicant has proposed to comply with these development standards, and those standards are also incorporated in the resolution conditions of approval. And those basically entail, I'm going to go kind of quickly through this list. The applicant is required to maintain a written management plan that includes staff training, neighborhood outreach, security, and screening of residents. On-site management and onsite security is required at all times during operation of the facility. Adequate external lighting is required, as well as providing adequate parking design for security of the residents, for security of visitors and employees, and security of the surrounding areas, and will be required in compliance with our parking requirements within our municipal code. Staff and services are to be provided to assist residents of the emergency shelter to obtain permanent shelter and income. So there's an effort to do that. No individual or household may be denied the emergency shelter because of an inability to pay. The facility is required to maintain good standing with the city and any state licensing requirements. And then the maximum number of beds will need to comply with occupancy limits of the building code. So there are a number of housing, or a number of general plan policies that are outlined in the staff report. One particular one that I wanted to call out is policy H12, which relates to residential care facilities and emergency shelters. This, this policy recognizes the value of eliminating government constraints in the operation of construction of transitional and supportive and supportive housing and emergency housing consistent with state law and city's obligation to comply with state law. A couple of other things I wanted to mention, as this question came up today, there have been a number of funding sources that have been popped up by this, from the state to address COVID-19 and the crisis and the impacts on vulnerable communities. So the first one that I wanted to mention is Project Room Key, which is intended to help communities address the public health crisis related to COVID by funding housing the homeless individuals who are, like I said, particularly vulnerable to the COVID virus. According to the Director of Homeless Planning and Outreach, which I spoke with today, in Marin County, the funding that has been used has increased shelter capacity by nearly 60%, so it's been helpful. In July, the state announced an additional funding opportunity known as Project Home Key, which is an additional round of funding to make these units that were either already approved by Room Key permanent or look for opportunities for new units to be located as part of the Home Key project. This is, so the county partnered with different communities and nonprofits to apply for these loans. One of those communities was us, and one of those projects was the property here at 3301 Kerner Boulevard. We have not received any indication of whether we are going to receive those funds, and we are currently on a waitlist. This project is currently on a waitlist. And I say we because we have partnered with the county and Homeward Bound and other nonprofits in different locations to kind of come up with a plan for how to use the Home Key funds. So the Home Key project and the Room Key project are completely separate from this project before you tonight. The project before you tonight is for an emergency shelter that would be for a one-year term to basically fill the need during construction of 190 Mill. If 3301 was received funding from the Project Home Key project, the underlying Home Key legislation provides a number of zoning and land use exemptions that are intended to streamline projects and provide rapid housing for vulnerable populations. These exemptions are not related to the project before you tonight. If the project does, sorry, I'm getting a knock here. If the project does not receive Home Key funding, it is still possible that the applicants will pursue a permanent housing project here at this location. However, the applicant would need to go through a process that would include a general plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and that would require a decision, a recommendation by the planning commission, and a final decision by the City Council. So there would be a process that would occur there. So that's, that's, I felt I needed to kind of clarify that those are two different projects that are not related to the project before you tonight. The project before you tonight is for a use permit for temporary emergency housing to fill that gap while 190 Mill Street is under construction. So staff has received a number of comments that some are in support, some are in opposition of the project. Those have been provided to your commission. And then some email comments came through with a response, and those emails were provided. I expect that some of those email people that send those emails will be participating in tonight's hearing during the comment review process, during the public comment process, sorry. So with that, staff is recommending adoption of resolution approving a use permit for the emergency shelter with recommended conditions of approval in the attached resolution. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ally. The chair at this time will ask the commission if they All right, hearing none.
I have a question.
Something, I know you guys. Yep.
Can you not hear me?
Chair Samutzi?
Oh. This is Commissioner Saudi. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. I have just a question about the one-year use permit. How is that enforced? I'm assuming that it's from the date that this site is, like, has a I'm assuming that it's from the date that this site is like has a certificate of occupancy, and that would then like run one calendar year. I just think that with the current state of our shelter in place and COVID, that this is not... The situation that we're in is not a short-term situation, and there may be more need for this kind of housing for a vulnerable population. And given this is like an office building that can be converted to emergency housing, and there may be construction delays on that Mill Street, is the one-year... Does the one-year correspond with the certificate of occupancy on the permanent shelter? Or is there time and contingency on that as well?
So because of the complexity of our shelter in place and, you know, the uncertainties with construction of the project 190 Mill, I didn't... There was... There isn't a limit on how long they can stay. The anticipation is going to be one year. Typically, the Planning Commission would, with recommendation by staff, would establish what that one year would be. If your commission is interested in having like a set period of time, and then allow staff to evaluate during that time and consider an extension kind of as a staff-level decision, we could do that. I mean, there are various ways of dealing with that. Staff's preference would be to allow the use permit to exist and allow the applicant to move into 190 Mill when they're ready to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I mean, I'm personally in support of the project. I just know that we have a commitment to the public and to the citizens of the city to ensure that like if we're allowing a one-year permit, that we're taking that seriously and that if we do need to extend it for any reason, that there's a public forum in which says it's extended and that it's not something that can just continue on without that form.
And I do see that the applicants have joined us. It might be a good question for them to provide some feedback as well on how they envision that. And just one last thing on that. Again, one way of dealing with it could be that we would... Staff could kind of formulate a condition of approval that, you know, states that, you know, term, one year, a year and a half with an extension possible. And through a public process. It could be with the Planning Commission or zoning administrator, which is also a public process. So as you're receiving feedback, I'm going to go ahead and see if I can formulate a condition of approval and allow you to hear it.
Okay, great.
Okay, cool.
Commissioners.
Oh, no, okay. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, this is Mary Kay at Homeward Bound. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present this to you tonight. We are thrilled to have found a place to be able to have a temporary shelter while our new Mill Street 2.0 is under construction. Our anticipated time of construction is a year. Of course, knowing that things have changed dramatically during this time, we're hoping that the year will be enough time for us, but it's possible because we have rented this place for a year with the opportunity to extend it for six months if needed. And if that might be something that the Commissioners could deem as appropriate for this use permit, that would be also very good for us. Thank you.
Any other information or points that you'd want to share? I know that there were some comments that were made publicly. This might be an opportunity to address some of those concerns if you're aware of them.
Hi, this is Paul Fordham from Homeward Bound of Marin. I would just say, in response to some of the comments, that there were some suggestions that might this turn into a permanent shelter on this site. That is not our intention at all. We're in the process of rebuilding Mill Street, 190 Mill Street, which is in the same neighborhood. The staff who were previously at 190 Mill Street would work at this site. And the idea is that as soon as the new center is open, everything will be relocated to our site. So we just wanted to emphasize that we're asking for a temporary use, and we have no intention of providing permanent homeless shelter on this site. There was also questions about security, and I think Ally covered that in the staff report, but we will... We are planning on having 24/7 security on the site, as well as two Homeward Bound staff on every single shift, 24/7. So I think that addresses some of the comments we've heard so far. We'd be happy to come back and address any comments Commissioners or the public have.
Okay, perfect. Appreciate that. So at this time, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
A quick question. In the canal, parking is paramount. Do you have more parking... Access to more parking at this facility than the Mill Street would have?
Oh, my goodness. Yes, we are delighted that we have 74 parking places here, probably more than anybody in the entire canal has. As a matter of fact, we probably rent out some of the spaces.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I think I know the answer, but for the sake of this being a public forum, I would like staff to comment on one of the... One of the letters addressed a notion of the notification duration. There was a notion of the 15-day prior as well as a four-day. I think I know the answer to this, but can you elaborate further on the notice requirements and why the timing is where it is? And also, there was a question of making the notice available for Spanish-speaking community members.
Yes, I'm happy to discuss that. We have... Since the planning or the City Council approved the 190 Mill Street project, the applicants have been looking for a place to transition that. And, you know, they heard you. They... The Planning Commission basically said, what, you know, what's going to happen during that time? And we want to make sure that there's some sort of plan. And so they've been working on trying to locate a site. This came up. They had to move pretty quickly. They, as they were trying to figure out how to maneuver that, when the decision finally came that they were going to move forward with the use permit, it wasn't a lot of time. So we moved really quickly on this project, and we normally try to provide enough information, enough feedback to the public to allow them to weigh in. I am particularly sensitive to providing comments to the Spanish-speaking community. We did so with the 190 Mill Street project. And because of the time constraints in trying to find us an alternate location for 190 Mill, we weren't able to really do the outreach that we really strive for in Centerfell. We really try to do a good job in Centerfell and engage the community. And, you know, we're just trying to balance the need to provide the emergency housing right now, given we're heading into the fall and winter seasons that we really wanted to... We really needed to kind of move quickly. So I don't know if there's anything that Mary Kay and Paul want to add to that, but I think, does that answer your question?
And Ally, maybe I can just jump in. The noticing procedure, state law actually mandates for use permits would be a 10-day notice. City in Centerfell goes above and beyond and provides 15-day public notice, both to property owners and residents or occupants of businesses, which again is not something required by state law. So we exceed the noticing time period, but there, you know, there has to be some reasonable duration of period. You can't notice things, you know, two months in advance and so forth for every single item. So 15 days is what it is. It's more than state law, and it's both to property owners, residents, businesses, and any kind of occupants in 300 feet surrounding of a property.
Thank you, Ally. Thank you, Raffi.
If I could add just one thing here. You know, we've been in the canal for 34 years now. So I think this is in the same neighborhood where people who have run that shelter now since 1986. So it's just a different location temporarily, and pretty soon we'll be back in the new place.
Good, thank you. Commissioner, Ally, you have one question too?
Yeah, I have two questions, and I am in favor of this project. These two questions come from a letter that we received from a resident. And she was concerned that the Canal Neighborhood is getting a disproportionate number of homeless shelters. Actually, she said in both Marin and also Centerfell. My first question is, is that true? And if it is, is there a plan to distribute homeless shelters around? And the second thing that she mentioned was, you know, the crash in the canal area.
You're cutting in and out, but I think I understand kind of the basic question. And that is, are we, the Centerfell, taking on housing communities from outside of the city? And the answer is, I believe, we're not. I think I provided in the staff report a number account of about 160 in the last point in time counts in terms of the number of persons dealing with homelessness within our city. This is providing housing for 44 beds. So it's definitely not more than what we're seeing in terms of our homeless community. I mean, in terms of the location, this is a location that's been proposed by the applicant. We... I don't... Again, this might be something that the applicant might address. You know, often with these types of proposals, we're looking at... Applicants are looking at where they can find a location. Our... Right now, our ordinance allows emergency shelters with a use permit in this district. This is a CCIO, the Core Canal Industrial District, as well as the... Within the Light Industrial District, which is both... Exists both in the canal area and in... There's a section of Northern Centerfell that has that same designation. I don't, you know... There aren't other shelters in the canal. The other location, I would say, is 190, but the point of this project is to accommodate that emergency housing while the 190 Mill Street is under construction. So I... Hopefully, that answers Commissioner Privatoli, and hopefully, that answers your question. I... It was hard for me to... Because you were cutting in and out, I don't...
I think if I can also speak to the fact that this is temporarily replacing the shelter beds that were at 190 Mill Street. So it's not in addition to... They were already in that neighborhood, so it's sort of a wash. It's actually a slight reduction. And I would also add that, you know, Homeward Bound's other shelter, a large shelter program is an 80-bed shelter, and that's in Nevado. It's not in the Hamilton area of Nevado. It's not in the canal. So, yeah, I don't see that there's a disproportionate amount of permanent shelter beds in the canal.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from Commission? Okay, Hearing None, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and I'll ask staff to open up public comments.
Thank you, Chair Samutzi. We do have a few people that have called in. So as a reminder, if you have called in and want to speak on this item, please press star nine now to virtually raise your hand. I see that one person has raised their hand, so I'll get to them in a minute. Once it is your turn, you will hear a notification that the host is inviting you to participate. At that time, please press star six to unmute yourself. You can then speak, introduce yourself, and you'll be allotted up to three minutes to speak. One thing to remember is if you have a device also playing this meeting, you'll need to turn off one of that audio source so there's no feedback loop. Also, there is availability to comment through YouTube Live Chat. We have already received one, which I'll read in a minute. But if anybody else watching on YouTube Live would like to make their chat comments, now is the time. So first, we'll start with the phone-in callers. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute the first caller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Bruce Livingston. I'm the Executive Director of Alcohol Justice, which is immediately adjacent to the property. We share about 150 feet, I think, of shared driveway and parking space. And we operate numerous youth programs and neighborhood-oriented programs. Youth for Justice, Latinos Unidos de Marin, Consejo Restaurativo, a Spanish literacy program, and Al-Anon. We have not heard from Homeward Bound. I love you guys. We're not opposing this project, but a little call would have helped. We have a number of concerns. Our first concern is that the public notification is just the bare minimum. 300 feet barely covers across our property just to a couple of neighboring businesses, and it's not in Spanish. It should be a quarter-mile notification, and it should have been not just a 15-day notification, but your public docket was not even available till late Friday. So what could people be looking at anyway? So that's inadequate, and I would ask that you, at your next meeting, you take this issue up after you've notified the public in Spanish as well. Secondly, we have mitigation concerns. As I said, we're not opposing the project, but we already have issues that might be related to people without housing every night. We have to have 24-hour security. We would like to see shared security on our property, which is completely open with the old Gilardi property next door, the one we're talking about here. We used to have shared security with that building too. But we would like shared security paid for by Homeward Bound or the city. We would like to see that there's cleanup, because every morning, there's something that has to be cleaned up. Sometimes human waste, sometimes beer cans, sometimes... Just the other day, I saw evidence of crack cocaine use. So that is necessary as a mitigation with further impact from this property. And also, very close to the back, over the years, there have been numerous problems of invasion of the secure garbage area in the 3301 Kerner Building. And I think it would be really smart for either the city, county, or Homeward Bound to pay for construction of a fence in the back of our property. That would close it off where a lot of nefarious activity takes place and people end up going there as soon as they're out of shelter. And so I think there's some mitigation that's fairly affordable that could be done, but rushing into this without looking at the impacts... We're the most impacted business by far with a very close shared proximity to this site, and we'd like you to consider delaying this until we have a chance to talk about mitigation and a chance to notify the public, which very well might be very supportive in the canal. But in a canal that's 77% Latino and primarily Spanish-speaking households, not notifying to the residents in the canal is frankly really disappointing. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't see any other hands raised in the... On the phone yet, so again, if you have... Want to raise your hand, please do so now by pressing star nine. While I wait for some hands to be raised, I'm going to read a couple of comments that came in on YouTube Live Chat so far. So first comment is from Karen Strollia. "I'm the Director of Downtown Streets Team in the North Bay. We strongly support this project. It is a crucial part of our continuum of care in Marin County. Not having approval of this project would negatively impact the progress we have collectively made to get people into housing, especially during the COVID crisis and as the hotel programs wind down. Homeward Bound of Marin are incredible in operating our current emergency shelter program. This new location will hold the same wonderful impact. Thank you." The next YouTube Live Chat comment is... Says, "I'm Aaron, born and raised in Centerfell. Own a business across the street of this proposed project." and raised in Centerfell, own a business across the street of this proposed project. How is the city going to support SRPD? Hold accountable the security proposal." And, uh, anybody else has any comments on YouTube Live Chat, please enter them now. Looks like we have a couple more hands raised on the phone, so I'm going to go ahead and unmute the next caller. And remember to press star six once you hear the alert that you've been invited to speak.
Hello, this is Valerie Lafrano. Um, I too am a partner in the, uh, properties across the street, 21, 31, and 41 Belvidere, and we operate, uh, auto body repair in, um, a couple of those buildings. And, uh, we do have a concern about, um, basically the cleanliness of the area, uh, of the whole district, of the whole Canal community. This may not be the time to talk about it, but, um, it is something that really perplexes us. Some of the things that we see are just the trash that's strewn about, especially on a Monday morning when we come in and we haven't been there all weekend. The trash that's strewn about right in front of the property, um, the, uh, items that have been vandalized when we arrive. Um, watching, I, people in the neighborhood urinate on our fences, we're just kind of wondering, what, what's the city's plan for that in general in terms of making that a, a better place to be? And also, um, a little bit more police patrol, I think. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And then we have another caller that I will unmute now. Remember to press star six once you hear the invitation to speak.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Mark Schottwell, and I am the Executive Director of Ritter Center located in San Rafael. Uh, Ritter Center is a federally qualified healthcare for the homeless center. And I'd also like to say thank you to you Commissioners and others who work for the City of San Rafael for your forward-thinking and your positive partnership in our work together to end homelessness here in San Rafael. I've had the opportunity to work closely in collaboration with Homeward Bound of Marin for the last two years and our collective efforts to end homelessness in Marin County for individuals living with significant medical and behavioral health disabilities. And I've been consistently impressed with the level of professionalism and excellence that all of the Homeward Bound staff bring to all their work with clients and in all their interactions in our system of care. I've had the opportunity to see firsthand the high-quality, well-built, meticulously-maintained facilities that Homeward Bound of Marin operates, specifically their Mill Street Shelter in San Rafael, the New Beginnings Center in Nevado, and several of their affordable housing and family shelter sites in both cities. So truthfully, I think any place that Homeward Bound lines up in the county, actually, they're good for the neighborhood. Um, the relocation to the Mill Street Shelter while this new facility is being built, it's an essential component of the ongoing success in reducing and eventually ending homelessness in San Rafael and in Marin. With respect to the earlier comment about unsheltered individuals in the area, Marin is only one of two counties in the state to have seen significant reductions in homelessness, and it's in no small part due to the work of Homeward Bound in Marin and the Mill Street Shelter. And so at a time when there are unsheltered people still in our city and in our county being seen, this is a time where we could also see massive increases in homelessness due to the economic crisis. So we must keep this successful and positively impactful resource alive to prevent and end homelessness for Marin County residents. Homeward Bound's been operating in the same neighborhood for many years without problems, and they should absolutely be supported to move forward with this project. Thank you for your time. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak and to partner with Homeward Bound of Marin and everybody in the city.
Okay, so, um, there are a couple callers still there that, um, if you want to speak, now is the time to raise, virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. And I'm seeing no further comments in YouTube Live Chat, so if there's anybody else that wants to provide their comment YouTube Live, now is the time. Okay, looks like we got one more phone-in caller, so...
Hi, this is Milton Davis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to comment on the situation. Our, my business is, uh, two doors down from, uh, from 30, uh, from 3301. Uh, we've been there, or I've been there for 40 years. My boys have taken over the business. Um, really, just to tell you the, the way I feel here, this is, I'm just absolutely overwhelmingly upset with the homeless situation that we're living with already. The feces, the puke, and you name it, same thing as some other people have been telling you already, is already too much. You're going to put 44 homeless people into this building on the corner, which is not what it was ever designed for. I know. I watched it get built. There is going to be, I'm sorry about you homeless people. I would like to help as many homeless as I can, and I have within my own family and around the entire neighborhood through my entire life. I'm a born Marinite. This is sad, what you're doing to us. I want you to put this down in your book. I want you to put it down in your notes. This is sad. You're going to put 44 more people. Where do they go in the morning? My neighborhood, my corner. I have a 115-pound Doberman to keep people from going in and using my bathroom. I have 10 employees, three of them are women. They are accosted every single week. This is too much. You're going to double it up? You're going to make more? This whole neighborhood was never set up for what you want to do. I want that to be real clear. And one more thing that I want the City Council to look back on. I do believe that the Street of Belvidere produces a greater number of revenue than all of downtown combined. You're going to bring in people that are going to damage what we're trying to do, and you better believe I pay my taxes. I have nothing else to say, but I don't want this. No one in our neighborhood wants this. Is that clear? End. Bye.
Okay, there are no more chat comments, and I'm not seeing anybody on the phone in call with their hands raised. If anybody else, looks like there's two other callers. If you have any comments, now is the time to virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. Okay, it looks like there's a, somebody on the chat saying their hand has been raised, but not showing up. Uh, so this is to Aaron. We read your comment from the chat. If you'd like to, um, add to your comment, press star nine now so I can see which caller you are. Okay, it looks like we've got it there. Caller, go ahead and unmute yourself by pressing star six. Okay, it looks like they hung up. So this time, I'm not seeing any further calls or any new chats.
Okay, thank you for that. So at this time, with no further public comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, and so next, I'm going to call on the Commissioners who will in turn, um, ask any follow-up questions of staff or applicants.
Uh, I have a question. Um, in the, in the proposal, there is a, there's reference to 24-by-7 security. Uh, can you elaborate a little bit further on that? I direct this at both the applicant and staff to describe that, um, what, what that looks like.
Yeah, if I may, I'll start and then have, um, either Mary Kay or Paul jump in. Um, the applicants are required to have security, um, when the business is in operation. So, um, because the applicants have indicated that they will likely be in operation 24/7, that's their security would have to be there 24/7. Um, I also have, um, in the staff report indicated that there will be, um, at least two staff members on-site, um, during operations in addition to the security. Um, so I, I don't know if there's anything else that, um, the applicants would like to add to that. Um, I, I think that's...
Uh, I can just say that mainly the security for us is that, um, we, uh, will have, you know, the doors of the building are going to be locked, and the security will be letting people in, escorting them upstairs to the top floor, escorting them out again if they only be using the smoking area. Um, we anticipate some people will spend most of the day in the building. Other folks will go and leave and go about business during the day. Some people will be working and come home to the shelter, so security's really there to let people in and out as needed. Um, it's not patrol the grounds. They will do that a little bit as, as needed, but really, it's maintaining the security of, of the, uh, property itself.
And that is similar, um, yeah, can I just ask a follow-up question on that? Is that similar to, um, how the property is, um, that the existing property on 190 Mill Street would be secured as well? You're not changing your security protocol for the temporary shelter, correct?
No, we're not changing that security. It's the same as, we had security at 190 Mill Street too.
Um, uh, this is Commissioner Lubomirski. Uh, I, so I have some concerns that this is a, a number much greater than you've had previously. Um, I understand the need for this, this bridge to the new building. Totally understand that. But I think it's, it's, it's problematic not to take some responsibility for those people coming and going within 100 yards, a block, something that, um, and I don't know exact, I mean, I don't know how we can, we can legislate anything beyond the property border, but I think, listening to the neighbors and understanding the dynamics of that area of the Canal, um, it's, uh, it's got to be a problem, I think.
Can I, sorry, that's all.
That's, okay.
Can I say it's actually a reduction? So at 190 Mill Street, we had 55 beds, uh, and now with this, we're proposing 45 here. So it's less people than we had previously. And so it's not an increase, it's a reduction of, uh, beds to what we'd had previously. Um, so I just wanted to make sure you said that. You said we're increasing our capacity, and that's not true. Uh, I do hear the neighborhood comments of things, you know, going in the neighborhood and being attributed to people who are homeless. Um, those are all pre-existing. That's prior to this building here. There's obviously problems in the neighborhood, but we have had a shelter for 55. We're proposing 45. And one response to some of those comments are if there's people urinating and defecating in the street, uh, you know, hopefully those are people who we can get into the shelter and they don't need to be outside on the street. Um, but the pre-existing conditions of that neighborhood, uh, we were in the Canal. We were not on this block in the Canal, but we were within a half-mile, uh, of the site. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to make sure you understood. I wanted to counter your first comment saying there's an increase in the number of people, and actually, it's less. Um, I do hear the other comments about the neighborhood. Um, but we only have, when, when we don't patrol the whole neighborhood, we work with the confines of our building to try and help people get from homelessness into housing, and we've had great success of doing that. I think we've, we've housed, uh, set over 70 people since shelter-in-place started who've moved from the shelter into housing. So we continue to, and that's all kinds of housing. That's subsidized, that's getting people to share with roommates and figure out market rate housing, and many people in the shelter are working, as we said, so they stay with us or they save money and move into housing. There's many different pathways out, but the point is, the shelter is a vital place for people to be. It's safe, where they can wash and be clean and use the bathroom as they make the next step in their journey back into housing, back into employment. Without it, people are never going to get out, being outside, so, yeah.
I think you're, uh, I think you're on mute, Commissioner Lubomirski.
Commissioner Lubomirski, I think you're on mute.
Oh, sorry. I am, I, I support your program 100%. Okay, I understand that it's, that it's needed and it's vital, and you guys do a wonderful job. So I would never say that. But, but also, um, there's a reason why it's in the Canal, and there's a reason why it's in Hamilton where it is. I don't see it in Mill Valley. I don't see it in Corder Meder. I don't see it in, in places that are, um, you know, just don't want transitional housing. Uh, but I'm not arguing that program. I'm just saying, it's, um, it's, it is what it is. I don't know.
All right, I, I do have some questions from Commissioner Privatalli. He's having some audio issues. Uh, it sounds like these are directed more towards staff. Um, his question is, in response to the neighbor's complaints about trash and crime, what is the process for the city to improve cleanup and policing in the area? And I guess in addition to this, he's referencing, uh, a Spanish-language survey done as part of the 2040 Plan where trash was listed as the top issue of the Canal area.
Um, so two, this is a kind of a two-part response. The first part is that, um, the applicants are, they're, while they're responsible for their use and the impacts of their use, they are not responsible for, um, dealing with pre-existing, um, issues. And so this applicant is, this project that's before you tonight would not be dealing with that. Um, I don't know what, what isn't, what the plan is for, um, policing the Canal area in addition to what's already been done. Um, that's something that I could do some research on and kind of report back to your council, I bet your commission, um, in the future. I'm just kind of giving you an update on, you know, what we're doing, um, in the Canal, both just in policing and outreach and trying to engage and provide services to that community. Um, but I don't have an answer for you now in terms of what that plan might look like.
And his response is, "That would be great." Uh, he'd like some research on that issue. Any other, any other, uh, questions from the Commission? Seeing none. Uh, staff, do you have any additional comment or advice, uh, with regards to any particular motion that may come forward?
Yes, um, so one of the comments that was, um, uh, provided by, uh, Commissioner Saudi was regarding the length of time and, um, trying to come up with a condition that would address that. And so I'd like to read that, and maybe if you want to tweak it or if you like that, the motion would then have to include, um, this, if staff, if your commission is, um, interested in this. So the, the way the condition would read, what would be, um, this use permit is effective for, and I, I chose 18 months, um, but again, um, depending on what your commission feels is the appropriate time. The reason I chose that was, um, you know, kind of the, the, trying to kind of get over the hump of winter, um, I think would be appropriate. And, um, also, I heard, um, Homeward Bound, uh, representative saying that, um, 18 months may be a possibility. So, um, um, again, so, so let me start all over. This use permit is effective for 18 months and will expire on April 30th, 2022, unless an extension is applied for and approved by the Planning Commission, um, or Zonia Administrator. However, I will leave the Planning Commission, I will leave that part up to the Planning Commission.
Okay, so it sounds like there'll be some discussion then. Okay, any, any, anything else to think about, or I think that's, that pretty much covers all the, all the questions people have?
I, I think that pretty much covers it. Um, I'm happy to, to address some of the questions, um, specifically that, um, Commissioner Privatalli asked were kind of on my list of things to respond to as they were provided by one of the, um, commenters. Um, um, you know, I, it, I'll just reiterate, we, we do try to provide, um, the correct amount of notification. Uh, this was notified for 15 days is required. We try to provide the right type of outreach in, um, Spanish and English specifically to the Canal We try to provide the right type of outreach in Spanish and English specifically to the canal area. But again, because, you know, there's, we're kind of in a time crunch. The applicants are trying to find a solution for their, you know, kind of a transition for their existing location so that they can get started. And, you know, there's, that gap is being filled during that time. So this was kind of a faster moving process than normal, but we did kind of stick to our obligation by providing adequate, sorry, providing the required notification within that certain buffer, the three hundred foot buffer. So I think that is it. Unless there are other questions from your commission.
Okay, doesn't seem like there are. So what we can do now is we can go down just alphabetical order, I'll call folks out to see if they have any additional comments or sort of what their thoughts are would be with regards to Ally's additional advice around potential motion. So we'll start with Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Chair Sambuti. So there's clearly, you know, just acknowledging community comment on the introduction of the emergency shelter. I'm taking that all in. I think that this is, this is a, this is a tough call. I'm trying to put myself in that position of the local community members in the canal. All this said, you know, I think I'm, I'm considering, you know, the existing conditions, which I think I take as a separate issue in the city. I think we need to come up with solutions that address those. I do stand in support of making sure that people who are experiencing homelessness have a mechanism and in a way to transition from homelessness to something more permanent. So I would just say I'm taking in all the comments and I think I've rendered my decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lubomirski?
Yeah, just, it's, they're in a tough spot. They need to, you know, keep their program going and, and this is the location they've found. So I wouldn't want to burden the program any greater than it already is trying to make these adjustments while they're constructing a new facility. So yeah, they're, they're bigger problems than, than just Homeward Bound would be bringing to the site. But, you know, it's, it's a tough one. So I, I will, I'll support it tonight, but not overly enthusiastic about it and having to be where it will be.
Thanks for that. Commissioner Provetaly, are you able to, to speak? If not, you can talk about your thoughts too and I can.
I'm not sure, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, great, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Saudi?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. You know, I do too sympathize with the neighbors and understand that the issue of homelessness is greater than what this project is, can provide an answer to. But I, I stand with the perspective that without programs like Homeward Bound and the Ritter House, that the condition that we're seeing in the canal would even be greater. And our city and our county actually would, would be worse off. So some of the, the things that people find displeasing and, and the suffering that we have in our community in that area would be exacerbated. I think the idea of policing is counterintuitive. These, these programs are actually providing support and trying to solve the issue rather than just push it to other areas. And I don't really see policing as an answer to this. I, I respect the work that Homeward Bound has done and the applicants have dedicated their professional lives to and it's, it's not a small task and I think they have an uphill battle. The site, you know, I drive through that site when I return from Costco, or not Costco, it's from Target, I think like a lot of us do, and turn off in front of it. And I do see a lot of people walking and there is like a lot of community street activity on that area. And I hope that whatever, you know, security and whatever support that happens within that site is able to address some of the, you know, issues or maybe happening on the street. So I'm happy to support the project and especially knowing that it's only, you know, half a mile away from the existing site. I don't think we're presenting new issues in the neighborhood. We're just actually providing less beds close in the same neighborhood. So I, I don't see any reason to not support the project. I, I do think that there is an importance to create a public forum for extend, you know, for any extension of, of the commission use permit, just so that makes sure that there's transparency around it and that we have the opportunity to really have dialogue around it. So that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you. And then from my end, I reiterate a lot of the comments that have already been shared around the necessity of these services. I mean, I, I think given the, the status of the economy, homelessness is going to get worse. I mean, we're seeing, you know, eviction waves and things like that, so homelessness is going to get worse. So it's actually kind of counterintuitive to then be stingy with providing placements for these, for these, for these programs and saying, you know, why doesn't Mill Valley have it? Well, it's like, okay, well, this is the location that we can get it. There's not a lot of time, winter is coming up. You know, there's a potential for, you know, an additional, more severe wave of COVID plus flu season. So I think spending time endlessly, I don't know, venting frustration about having to be the one that lives next to something you don't like, I don't think that's productive or particularly a good citizen-like. You know, I live across the street from a halfway house. The neighborhood response, instead of complaining about the trash, has actually been one neighbor created a lending library, another neighbor created a bench for people to sit. It's actually become much more of a community-friendly place as a result of neighborhood, neighbors taking the attitude of, you know, we, we need to be supportive if we want to solve the problem and not what's the city or what's somebody else going to do to fix this for me. So I think that while I do understand the complaints, I think a good analogy is if you get cancer, you know, chemo is not fun, it does not feel great, it sucks, right? The solutions sometimes are not going to be friendly or pleasant or not going to be, you know, living in Malibu or whatever. But I think to solve these problems, you know, we have to, we all have to pitch in and make sacrifices. And I think that's just sort of the nature of the times we live in, is that we need to be much more cognizant of our own role and contributing to solutions instead of pointing out problems for somebody else to fix. So I think with, with those comments in mind and sort of considering what everybody has said, does anybody have a motion? I know we, we had, we have to consider Ally's sort of suggestion about the eighteen, sorry, the eighteen month permit with potentially some kind of conversation or it's public forum around the twelve month mark around whether it needs to be extended, et cetera. So with all those, of those things to consider in mind, does somebody have a motion?
This is Eli Hill. I would like to make a motion with those clarifications in place, Ally. Both the specification of the eighteen month as well as the twelve month check-in on the status of the construction of the existing, of the existing location, one ninety Mill.
Second motion.
That was Commissioner Provetaly.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, great. If there's any discussion, if not, we'll move to roll call. Staff, could you please conduct roll call?
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Lubomirski?
Yes.
Commissioner Provetaly?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi?
Yes.
And Chair, Acting Chair Sambuti?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero and with two absent. And I'll go ahead and read the appeal rights. The planning commission's decision is final unless appealed to the city council within five business days ending Tuesday, October sixth at five P M. Anyone wishing to appeal the decision should contact the city clerk by email at city.clerk two at cityofcenterfell.org. Let me repeat that. City.clerk two at cityofcenterfell.org or by phone at four eight five three zero six six to make arrangements for filing an appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners and staff. Appreciate it very much.
Yes. All right, I believe that ends the public facing a portion of this meeting. And now we'll jump into the director's report.
Okay, I'm going to give you a few things that I might have Rafi jump into, see if he has anything else to add. I did want to just let you know that the city council did receive the informational report on the inclusionary housing that you received and received the comments that you provided. The city council did indicate that they supported staff recommendations and supported the modification to the D R B with providing direction to staff to kind of find ways to provide, continue that, that public participation that we've seen in the D R B. So we'll be returning back to the council with a, a resolution on a pilot program that would kind of provide what that might look like and how the public comment and participation portion of that would look like. So we'll be working on that. I also wanted to mention that we are, our code enforcement staff is busy. We do have somebody that is helping our code enforcement manager, but she continues to help with code enforcement related to COVID outreach and enforcement. So she's been wearing a couple of hats and incredibly busy. So hopefully the community can understand that and she's, she's there. She's just, is taking her some time to try to balance all of the work that, that is involved in code enforcement. The building division continues to be very busy and we have opened up a virtual counter that is for both planning and building. We have community members that have been signing up for days during the week and hopping on to a virtual counter similar to the Zoom call and getting a face-to-face feedback from planning, building, fire, engineering. So, and that's been working really well and we've seen some positive feedback on that. Rafi, do you want to provide some information on the general plan or did you, do we do that last time?
I think we did it last time.
Yeah, we did that last time. So I think the next, their next meeting will be kind of the first, first pass of the actual general plan itself and that should be released within the next week for public review. I'm sorry, not your next meeting, the meeting of October twenty-seventh is going to be your first time to review and provide comments on the general plan.
That's all I have, unless you have anything else, Rafi.
No, one other note, just more for the community than maybe the commission. With, with the, you know, onset of COVID and shelter in place, we've had to do a lot of changes. One of them being application submittals being mostly online. So we had to kind of recreate and create new processes to accept both planning and building applications online. So it's one of the few good outcomes of the COVID is, it's kind of put us in a position to have those opportunities and makes it a lot easier for people. However, so it's been working really well, both from the planning and building standpoint for permit submittals. And we have some very clear informational videos and written instructions on our website and people seem to like it. But we have run into a little bit of a glitch. So our online submittal has been down since Friday and it's still down. So we're, we have people working on it feverishly to try and get it back up. But at this point, the online portal for submittals is down. And if you have any questions, we're trying to submit an application tomorrow and it's still not up, please contact us and we can make alternate arrangements. But it should hopefully be up soon, once the technical issues have been resolved.
Awesome. Is that all?
That's it.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Any P C members have any communication to share? Nope, no one's having any vacation to Aspen anytime soon. No?
No.
If not, then I think that concludes everything for today's meeting. You can adjourn today's meeting.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone. Thank you. Thanks to everyone.